1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, under item two, action items 2.1.
We have employee insurance benefits, RFP, presentation and cost comparison that's attached.
Thank you, Ms. Bovette, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, Vice Chair Weber, and members of the council. Last week, I came before you to discuss employee benefit renewals, and you were given a presentation by Brown &amp; Brown regarding the rate proposals and carriers being evaluated. Since last week, we have met with the Employee Representatives Group on Wednesday, September 21st. At that time, the Employee Representatives relayed the discussions had within their respective departments and the general sentiments regarding the proposals received. I believe council members have received an email from the Representatives Group indicating that a vote was conducted with all departments accounted for, and the group unanimously supported renewing the health insurance contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield, switching dental and vision providers to MetLife, and switching dental and vision providers to MetLife. Specific considerations discussed were Blue Cross Blue Shield's extensive global network, their excellent customer service, the prenatal plus program, and the wellness platform and benefits offered. It was clear from the discussion within the group that serious thought and consideration had been given and put into this recommendation. On Thursday, September 22nd, the Pension and Insurance Committee met to consider the proposals further, as well as listen to the recommendations from the Employee Representative Group, and receive reference feedback on health partners from Human Resources. Ultimately, the Pension and Insurance Committee voted unanimously to support the renewal of health insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield, as well as switching vision and dental carriers to MetLife, and remain with WEX as the flexible benefit provider. I believe the excellent proposals received demonstrated the benefits of working with our consultants from Brown &amp; Brown. We look forward to continuing our work with them, and we'll be looking at additional health insurance plan offerings, as well as rebuilding bidding the self-insured health insurance option for 2024. During the next year, we'll have sufficient time to thoroughly evaluate alternative plans and carriers. Katie Weidel, our consultant representative with Brown &amp; Brown, and her team, I believe, are on the line if you had additional follow-up questions before action.
Thank you, Ms. Bovette. Questions, Mr. Weber?
In light of the unanimous recommendation from the Pension and Insurance Committee, in light of the prenatal and maternity and mental health benefits, superior benefits there, and in light of Blue Cross Blue Shield's top rating, I recommend going with the, I move to approve the recommendation from the Pension and Insurance Company Committee.
There's a motion by Weber, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Weigle, further comment or questions? Okay, hearing none, I think I asked several questions, Ms. Bovette. I am a little bit, I don't know how to describe my feelings. I am disappointed that our employee reps didn't get behind the change, but I understand why they didn't. And I believe we were at a late stage when Mr. Weigle suggested putting this back out for our RFP, and it was a great idea that he did that, and thank you, Danny, for doing that. And I appreciate the fact that we're going to look at it again next year, and so in which case, I am going to vote to support this, but I certainly hope there's room for improvement for the fees for the taxpayers for next year. So, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn by Weigle? Yes, second by Weber, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Okay, move right along, Grand Forks City Council's Committee, the whole from Monday, September 26th, under item one, called order 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Weigle.
Here.
Osowski.
Weber.
Here.
Blonsky.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
And Sandy.
Here.
Of form.
Great, under item two, discussion items, item 2.1, Grand Forks County Home Rule and Sales Tax Presentation. Mr. Ford, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the city council. Thank you, I'm going to fire up the presentation here, thank you for the invitation to join you tonight. My name is Tom Ford, I'm the Grand Forks County Director of Administration, and I have with me Commissioner Tom Falk, Commissioner Bob Ross, and Grand Forks County Coordinator Grace Ullion. I do not want to do that. So, yes, President Council Sandy, members of the city council, I'm here to discuss Grand Forks County Home Rule Charter Reform of Government Pursuit, something that's been going on now for quite some time. In November, you are going to see two ballot questions posed by the county of Grand Forks. One is going to ask voters in November if the county shall adopt a home rule charter reform of government, and the second and separate question is going to ask the residents of the county, the voters of the county, if the county shall assess a half-cent sales tax. So with this body, I'm not going to get into what is home rule, because this body knows what home rule is, but what I like to do to describe home rule to folks who ask is it's a local constitution. It is an agreement between the county that lays out what the responsibilities and the powers of the county are, and it lays out what the actions of the citizens of the county are to keep the county in check and have greater local input and participation in county government. And of course, a home rule charter must be approved by a majority vote of the people. Again, I'll glaze over this one, and I'm going to ask the council, forgive my haste, as we have another town hall at seven o'clock in another community, but I want to be as thorough and quick as possible so you can ask questions. But really, home rule would allow the residents of the county to refer actions, recall actions to the county commission, and put them to a vote of the people. It would allow the county to ask the people for other revenue sources besides property tax, which we're pretty much solely dependent on. Really, by a vote of the people, approval of the people, could those be enacted. It would limit the commission to three terms, which if it's successful, I believe, would be the only county in North Dakota that has term limits for their commissioners, and would allow the county through public hearing processes to adopt new ordinances that benefit all residents of Grand Forks County. Again, I'll glaze through this, President Council Sandy. In doing this for the last few months, there are a lot of misconceptions that are surrounding the home rule effort. I'm going to identify the three most common ones. With county residents will lose local input over county government. Currently, under statutory rule, there really is no process for county residents to participate in Grand Forks County government, other than election and voting in different commissioners. If the home rule charter is successful, it actually grants more opportunities for the residents of the county to participate more, and I covered those referendum recalls, petitions, et cetera. The most common myth that's floating around is that home rule would allow the county commission to willfully enact new taxes. That is false. If the county commission wanted to enact any new revenue sources through taxes, they would actually have to put that to a vote of the people, and the people would have to approve that through a majority vote. And the other most common myth is home rule authority would negatively impact cities, park districts, school districts, town and zoning boards. It would not, if the home rule charter was adopted, it would only, it would be limited to county government, so it would not impact the city of Grand Forks, it would not impact planning and zoning, GF, Grand Forks Airport Authority, township zoning, it would just apply to Grand Forks County government. There are obviously benefits, so the commission wouldn't be pursuing this, but really, it would provide more local control over county operations. Something that's important to point out is the sheriff and the state's attorney would remain elected officials, that would not change that. Again, the commission could ask voters for other revenue sources, and it's our goal, the county's goal, that through other revenue sources, such as the sales tax, the commission could offset and try to keep property tax levies down through those other sources. And then, as I mentioned earlier, it does give residents a greater voice in county government. So, county home rule in North Dakota is not a novel concept. There are 12 other counties who currently have county home rule. We are the last of the large counties to adapt this, but as you can see from the slide here, some of the most common uses are emergency medical services, reorganizing county departments to better serve residents in their counties, and the elephant in the room, sales tax for road maintenance, bridges, culverts, other revenue sources, and to build or add on to correctional facilities. So what is the half-cent sales tax for? What does it really mean? So, in the charter, in the amendment, the second question that voters will have to answer in November, it will clearly lay out how that half-cent sales tax would be used. 60% would be dedicated for financing building, renovation, and acquisition, so specifically the addition of the correctional facility, the new juvenile detention center, and something that hasn't been widely discussed, but will need to be addressed in the future, is a law enforcement center for the Grand Forks County Sheriff's Office. 20% would go to fixing bridges, roads, and culverts, many of which do need replacement and fixing, and there'll be more, I'll get on that, I'll address that more in my presentation. And then 20% would be property tax relief, and I'll come back to that as well. This slide, I like to use this slide, it compares Cass County, Grand Forks County, I know, I hear it all the time, we're not Fargo, it's apples and oranges, but we're comparing Cass County to Grand Forks County in the situation we are in, which I'm going to expand on in a bit, but looking at the value of one mill in Cass versus Grand Forks County, but specifically the increased value of a mill from one year to the next, and you can see the dollars generated from valuation increases. And getting ahead of myself a little bit, this is the county, valuations are not keeping up with the costs of doing business, keeping up infrastructure, and providing services to the residents of the county, to include unfunded mandates. So what does 20% property tax look like? Essentially, 20% would be used to offset our county budget. Like I said, the county is about 75% entirely property tax revenue-driven, with some state aid and some federal grants and a few federal contracts. But essentially, if a home rule charter was successful, followed by a sales tax was successful, the county would look to use 20% of that estimated $5 million a year to offset the mills. So go more to the sales tax and less to your property taxes. And you can see there are just a few numbers, we estimate approximately a three-mill savings just in our general operating budget. So this is a key message I want to communicate to you, the city council tonight, is the challenges, property valuations, local growth, revenue, they're not keeping up with the infrastructure and the services demand of the county, therefore unable to meet all needs of the public. We have aging capital infrastructure, the most glaring example is the juvenile detention center, and we have to address that, we have to replace that, we're moving forward with that. Overcrowding in the correctional facility is another one, so I mentioned misconceptions. There is a misconception floating around the community that we have let the new jail deteriorate, that jail was built in 2013, and it's fine, we're out of capacity, we're out of room. Crime is not going down, it's growing, it's projected only to grow more, so we are in the situation we're in. And then, of course, the aged juvenile detention center, which the commission has determined is not a good use of tax dollars to continue investing in. So this is a picture of a couple of bridges out in the county. If we don't have the most bridges in the state of a county, then we are second to pass, but 64 have been identified by NDDOT as in need of immediate repair. They can still be driven on, but they need to be addressed. 31% of our culvert inventory needs immediate replacement, that's a picture of two different culverts, you see the price tag just for those 31% of the culverts is $25.3 million. So the key message, again, it's not about raising taxes, it's also, it's about trying to find other means for revenue to actually keep property taxes level or low. It's about local control of county operations and bringing the people closer to county government, not further away. It's about policies that will benefit all residents of the county, giving residents more voice in county government, and as much as we all hate this word, it's also about spreading the burden of costs to all users who use county infrastructure, not just property owners footing the bill. And then it puts Grand Forks County in line with other North Dakota counties who have already adopted this form of government. Mr. Sandy, I have two slides left, and then I'll be done. Back in July, the county commissioned a survey to all county households. I am aware that not every county household received one, but that was the intent, was to get to all households. A couple of questions that are, I think, are relevant for the city council to be aware of, a couple of questions, would you support a home rule charter on the November ballot? Now, candidly, we were pleasantly surprised at what these results came back at. You see about 64% combined definitely probably would support a home rule county charter. Another question, I believe the county should move forward with a home rule charter, combined strongly agree, agree, 65% said yes. When we asked the question about a half-cent sales tax, you see the support does drop to 50%, and that's not, was not surprising to county leadership, and the majority of participants supported a sunset clause on the sales tax. Therefore, it was the home rule county commission, or excuse me, the home rule charter commission, which was appointed by the county commission, to present two questions on the November ballot, home rule, sales tax. And we have some work to do as a county to communicate to the people why we need both. So finally, President, Council President Sandy, members of the city council, what are we proposing? The home rule charter, again, more local control, give citizens referral and recall action, allows the county to pose questions to the citizens, and allows county officials to create policies that impact all residents of the county, not just within cities. The half-cent sales tax, expected to generate $5 million annually, 60% towards capital building projects, 20% to fund roads, bridges, and culverts, which is very important, as the city and the county start to talk more about partnering on Mirfield Bridge, and then 20% funds are used to offset property taxes. In the charter, it does list December 31st, 2048 as a sunset, and we know the only way that gets extended is if the people agree to extend it. So that concludes my presentation. We are all here from the county, happy to answer any questions you may have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Our intention was to receive and file this information, but if anyone has any specific questions for Mr. Ford, Mr. Weber?
Sure, more comment than question. Thanks for being here tonight, both yourself.
My pleasure.
Commissioners Falk and Ross. 84% of the population lives in the city of Grand Forks, and about 97% of the sales tax in Grand Forks is derived in the city. So clearly, whether we're discussing infrastructure, economic development, or our shared responsibility to support the region's agricultural economy, the fortunes of the city and county are inextricably bound together. When the city does well, the county does better, and when the county governs well, supports the needs of the taxpayers, and prospers, the city of Grand Forks, its taxpayers, and people throughout our whole region all do better. So thanks for taking the time to educate us about your current efforts and needs. I look forward to working in a collaborative manner to make sure that Grand Forks City and Grand Forks County are pulling in the same direction and doing all we can to assure our successful future and shared prosperity. Thanks again for being here tonight.
Thank you, thank you, and we're happy to be here. If I may, President Sandy.
Certainly.
One other item that I forgot to mention is the county commission has committed to, if this all goes through, the commission has committed to use the sales tax to spend down the seven mills. So if you notice in your property tax statements, your county mills went up, that's because the capital construction mills, seven mills are being used for these projects. If this goes through, the commission has committed to use the sales tax to buy down those seven mills so that they go away.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, thank you. Mr. Ford, item 2.2, resolution authorizing the issuance, call for bids, and set sale date for $10,65,000 refunding improvement bond, Series 2022A, and $3.635 million sanitation reserve revenue bonds, Series 2022B, with a pre-sale summary of 2022A and B added, yes? Mr. St.
Yes, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. As President Sandy just briefed, we are looking at two bonds, and there are resolutions attached in a pre-sale summary. I'm just going to do a little summary and then hand it off to some folks at Baker Tilly that will introduce themselves and give you a little taste of what the market looks like. But we do have, every year we come to you in the fall with what we like to call a special assessment bond, it's a refunding improvement bond, this is the time of year for that, for the year's projects. And the other bond is a sanitation reserve revenue bond, which is used to finance sell fee of our landfill. What we're looking at tonight is to approve the resolutions that are attached, and what this resolution does is authorize the issuance, and then we would also call for bids and set the sale date for November 7th. The pre-sale summary goes through a timeline for you, so you can see when we expect to receive those competitive bids, 10:00 AM in Baker Tilly's possession on November 7th, and then we will report back to city council on November 7th. This all comes to you next Monday, to the council meeting for approval. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Paul Steinman and Ms. Lauren Volz, that will just summarize the market briefly for you.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Paul Steinman, my colleague Lauren Volz with me. So one other item, we'll be meeting with Moody's on the 25th of October, I believe, to present information and have them provide a credit rating on the proposed sales. So, yes, there's been a whole bunch of things going on in the bond market and the stock market and all the markets these days, so just to summarize, you know, basically my words generally are, you know, we're not going to jump ship, we're not going to panic, but rates generally are coming to more within the lines of a 30-day average bond rate. With all of the news that you hear and all of the stories about the bond market going wild, you'd think it was significantly higher than that, but since 1993, we're at near, nearly historical averages for bond rates and yields. So the first 10 years, a slight bit higher, the last 10 to 20 years, a little bit lower yields, but generally in the neighborhood of average yields since all the way back to 1993. So we'll be in the market with your two deals, one of the deals, the smaller deal, which is 3.1, let me just pull that up quick, your sanitation reserve deal is 3.5, yes. So I wanted to give you the estimate of true interest cost on that deal is 3.54%. And that's a short deal, 10 years, $3.6 million. And for your larger deal, which is, I should have all of this memorized, right?
No.
Like Maureen does, $10 million, the estimated true interest cost, which is an interest cost, including all of your costs in, the estimate there is 3.95%. So, and those were as of last Friday, with a little bit of padding in there for market movement, because we think the market is still going to move a little bit upward, but so generally, it will be in that range, which is new to a lot of folks. Over the last 10 to even 12 years, we haven't issued debt here in Grand Forks, that's really started barely with a 3%. So, again, it's not a time to panic, it's really average if you consider the 30-year history since 1993, so, but we'll be back here on November 7th to present you with those sale results. And I'm happy to take any questions, anybody has?
Why do they call them refunding improvement bonds?
So, North Dakota law has, well, years ago, we used to issue two sets of bonds, a first set and then a refunding set, and then another set, now we just call them refunding bonds to start with. It's just, it's basically the way that North Dakota law is written, to sell bonds. It's a nuance, I mean, Maureen, if you have any, you've lived through many years of that, where we did two sets in the same night and those types of.
The reason I ask is when it says refunding, in my mind, it implies you're actually refinancing a bond, but you're not, these are new bonds.
Right, right, so, yeah, right, the North Dakota law has you issue warrants and then refund warrants.
Got it.
In order to borrow money for the project. So I think by North Dakota state law, it is a refunding, but it isn't a refunding in typical terms, as we normally hear, to save money or things like that.
Got it. Any other questions for Mr. Steinman? Mr. Weber?
Move of approval.
Great, move by Weber, is there a second? Second by Veen, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Steinman, for being here. Item 2.3, approval of real estate purchase agreement, purchase of Lot 3, Block 1, Peony First Re subdivision of the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, project 8485.01, District Number 589, storm pond for Highway 81 and associated area. Yes, Mr. Gustin?
Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. I'll just kind of go through, kind of some background information and how we got here. As you know, this is attachment number three, back on September 6th, the council had approved the stormwater pond to go forward with that. There's going to be a bid opening, as I understand, this week, September 29th. I also understand that the construction will commence late this fall, or this fall, and going into the winter of, you know, 2022 and 2023. I think Mr. Grasser explained that it's easier to dig a hole when it's cold than it is when it's warm. The lot is Lot 3, Block 1, a Peony First Re subdivision, that's 17 acres in size. And the use of the parcel will be one for the stormwater pond, the footprint has been calculated by A2S and the city engineer's offices, 11.43 acres. There's also dedicated, on that lot will be a lift station, lift station number 49, that would be used for this area, that's half an acre, .52 acres. That leaves a little over five acres left of the 17 acres, and the city engineer's office has sought to acquire that five acres for stockpiling for flood materials, even stockpiling of the excavation materials from the stormwater pond, that can be placed in that particular area. So the ask is to purchase the entirety of that lot. The development agreement with Fu Fang did contemplate the acquisition of a lot from Fu Fang, it's Section 3.2.9H. And the way it was established under that particular provision is that there wouldn't be any compensation for the portion of the Fu Fang property that contributes to the stormwater pond, but there would be compensation paid for the area that is not owned by Fu Fang that would contribute to the stormwater pond. The payment is based upon the calculation of a per-acre price, times that 11.43 acres, times the percentage of the non-Fu Fang property that contributes to the stormwater pond. Attachment number two to tonight's agenda sets forth the calculation. Fu Fang's property, and this has been calculated, again, through the engineering folks, there's 192.5 acres that contributes, that they own to the stormwater pond. Other areas that contribute total 198.21 acres. And that consists of Highway 81 property of 138.59 acres, 27th Avenue and surrounding acres, a little over 54 acres, then that stockpile area, that's on Lot 3, that's five acres, and then the lift station, that half acre. The stormwater pond is not included in that calculation. So the total acres contributing to the stormwater pond are 300 and So, the total acres contributing to the stormwater pond are 390.79 acres. And so the areas that are not owned by Fu Fang is 50.72% of the total. And so then we go through the calculation. For the stormwater pond, we're using a $26,000 per acre price. That's actually lower than the price that I calculated, because I reviewed the deed. I used the deed upon which the stormwater pond was, is located. And if you do the calculation, it was $26,300 per acre. And so, the purchase price then becomes $150,730.69, because we're compensating for the non-Fu Fang area that is contributing to the stormwater pond. We're not paying Fu Fang for that portion, their proportion of the lot that contributes to the stormwater pond. The lift station, there's no compensation paid for that half an acre. And then the stockpile area is at the $26,000 price. Again, the stormwater pond calculation is pursuant to the terms of the development agreement. That calculation was negotiated. The stockpile area was something that came about because of some addition, the additional area on that property, and so using the price that Fu Fang had paid for that, for the parcel results in $26,000 per acre. So the total purchase price is 280, a little over $282,000. That amounts to a little over, about $16,000, a little short of $16,600 per acre, if you do the math. Just for information, I've been made aware that in other areas where the city has acquired property for the lift station, things like that, they're paying about $20,000 per acre. The purchase agreement is attached, attachment number one. It's a standard agreement that I've developed for other land acquisitions or other property acquisitions. Nothing really outstanding about it. It's a pretty standard type of agreement. Couple of items that I do wanna point out. Section 1.3 of the agreement, however, provides that if the contractor would happen to... We don't close. We're expecting to close October 14th. But if the closing would be extended, or the contractor wanted to start work before the closing, we're permitted to go out and start that work in advance. Also, the purchase price doesn't get specially assessed against Fu Fang. That's, again, consistent with the terms of the development agreement. This cost to acquire would not then be specially assessed to Fu Fang. That's consistent with Section 4.5.1 of the development agreement. The other item I wanna point out is the development agreement talked about the payment or the acquisition of this being five days after all of the conditions have been satisfied. But given the fact that the engineering department wants to get going with the stormwater pond that would serve the entire area, they wanted to go forward with the acquisition at this point, rather than delaying it for the future. So, and by delaying it, there may be implications for other projects that would have to be installed for that, for the annexation area as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that the committee may have.
Mr. Gustin, any questions for Mr. Gustin? Mr. Veen? Yes, sir?
Yeah, just a little more clarity on the price per acre for the land and the process we typically use and how this aligns or complies.
It actually aligns, Councilmember Veen. Thanks for the question. This is similar to what happened out in Oskerville, where the, there's already property that was developed. A stormwater pond was then installed, and as I understand, the city paid a portion for the location of the stormwater pond, similar to this. And so normally, what you'd normally have is an entire area that one developer has that is, the stormwater would be for that developer's property to develop the property and then sell it. And so, because the developer is really the beneficiary of the stormwater pond, because then he or she can go forward with their development and sell. Normally, there isn't a purchase price, or there's not a, we don't pay money to the developer. They donate the property for the stormwater pond. This is consistent in that Fu Fang is not, we're not compensating them for their proportion of the contribution to the stormwater pond. It is for those, we're compensating them for those areas that are outside of their property that contribute to the stormwater pond. And as I understand, that was consistent with what happened out in Oskerville as well. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Yeah, what was the price we paid per acre in Oskerville?
That I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know.
Could be interesting to compare, because there is some comparisons, because in other situations, the developer basically has to donate or whatever as a part of the development. This is a purchase of the property.
It's a combination of the two. It is a donation to the extent of their contributing portion of the stormwater pond and an acquisition for that portion that contributes to the stormwater pond that's not owned by Fu Fang. So it's a mix.
Again, we don't, you don't have the number to compare it.
I don't have it in front of me. I certainly could get it to you before next week's meeting.
Comments? Mr. Gustin, this is city, we're essentially following city policy, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, this is standard procedure for all of our stormwater ponds.
Yeah.
Whether it's the developer owns all the property, or in this case, the one party owns part of the property and some of the rest of the property is going to be benefiting other landowners there, which is why we have, some of it is given and some of it we're paying for.
Correct.
Process that we've gone through in Oskerville and other areas. I agree with Mr. Veen. It would be nice to know what the price of the property is in Oskerville, although I don't, cost of land changes where you are in town, so I'm not sure it's a perfect representation, but it certainly is valid information. Any other thoughts?
Fu Fang needs the bond, the property owner...
I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kavami. Any other comments or thoughts? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, Osowski, dissent. Thank you. Item 2.4, thank you, Mr. Gustin. Declaration vehicle surplus and authorized public sale from the Health Department. Mr. Bedard, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy, members of the council. The Health Department has a vehicle that's due and overdue for replacement. We'd attempted to purchase one in May of last year, and I just got word today that that vehicle is in, in Bismarck. And so we have a replacement vehicle for this aging one that is parked that needs some maintenance, requesting that we can declare it surplus and auction that.
Thank you, Mr. Bedard. Moved by Weigl. Is there a second? By Kavami? Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks. Item 2.5, food code update. Mr. Bedard, good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Sandy, members of the council. We are currently on the 2013 FDA food code. We have adopted it, not quite in its entirety. We have some clauses that were changed through the State Health Department, and we adopted it from the State Health Department. But we are looking to update it to the 2017 FDA model food code. This food code is looked at by industry and all the regulatory agencies and the food industry as far as what the updates should be. There's not a lot of real substantial updates to what it says from the 2013 one. There is a change as far as certified food protection managers that would require, like, each shift manager to be trained in basic food safety, as opposed to one per facility. So that's one of the notable changes in that. We work in conjunction with the State Health Department Food and Lodging Division as far as, we have an MOU with them. And in having a program that is at the same or higher level as theirs, they waive their license fees for local food establishments and accept our inspections. And we do due diligence to not duplicate their services versus our services. As part of that arrangement and agreement and cooperation, we are on their data system for no cost to us, and that's a big benefit for our program. And we're anticipating they're going to be updating that to the 2017 food code within the next year. And so we wanna move in conjunction with them in our food code updates. As part of your packets, there's support materials as far as the benefits of adopting the food code in its entirety. We've done that with the 2013 FDA food code essentially already. There's a summary of changes from the 2013 to 2017 food code and what the 2017 supplement is that takes care of any typos and things that weren't changed with the first rendition of the 2017 food code. We did include in your packets what is drafted into the city ordinance as to what the changes would be. And going through that, it's basically changing the language to the 2017 FDA food code and amending the section of city food code that talks about our longstanding requirement for certified food protection manager. It cleans that up some, as a lot of the exemptions previously were essentially what we would call a Level 1 facility, serving low-risk foods. It provides the exemptions and recognition for institutional facilities that have their own dieticians and specialty training and food safety standards like hospitals. Likewise, the schools had their input. They do their own food service training that isn't one of the exams that is recognized under the food code. So we'd like to exempt them from this requirement as well, as well as child cares. Also, one tidbit of change is instead of referencing a map for mobile food units, we thought it might be more straightforward to just list certain streets that would have been excluded by that map, a little more plain language for them to see, basically recognizing that they can only park their food trucks by following all traffic laws and standards in where there would be parking alongside those streets. So it would exclude, you know, obviously interstate and demers and some of the main roads where there is no side parking or where there is diagonal parking. But just listing some of those more busy streets where we would want them to be a traffic hazard. And that is basically what has come off of that map that was previously referenced. Be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Weigl?
Just a couple of things. As I look through the ordinance, as it comes up, it says that in Section 2, it says a food service establishment shall be exempt from the certified manager requirement if food preparation activities are solely limited to one or more of the following. And then under subsection A, it says a food establishment licensed as a Level 1 facility serving only low-risk food items as determined by Grand Forks Public Health Department's risk level assessment. Can we get more specific than that? Or do we have a copy of that risk level assessment?
The risk level assessment that we use is part of the food code in its annex. It's page 593, and I could probably pull it up for you if you wanted to see it now.
I'll look at it for next week.
But it is, it's Table 1 of Annex 5 in the annexes, and it includes most convenience store operations, hot dog carts, coffee shops, basically simple food operations, which we would list as Level 1. The only discrepancy that we would have from what they have in the annex is they do talk about being able to adjust levels based on performance, and we generally don't do that. We classify them based on what their food service is. And so, they have four risk categories. We only do three levels in the city. We just combine levels 3 and 4. And so that is how we get our standard.
Mr. Bedard, could you email the council that?
I can get you that singular page.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Weber? Yes, sir?
The exemption of childcare facilities, can you talk about that? We treat all childcare facilities the same?
Childcare facilities is, it's kind of a challenge, and it's being discussed with food and lodging moving into health and human services. Health and human services licenses and inspects child carries for the care aspect of the children. We get involved when there is food service, so that would be a food establishment, then our food code does apply. These operations can vary greatly from in-home to in a facility. We generally aren't in the in-home ones. We're in the facility groups and facilities. They have a lot of tasks at hand. They have a lot of challenges in providing the childcare and a lot of regulations upon them. This is just another thing. They're usually providing simple, straightforward meals to the children, or it was just an added burden on them. They've communicated that it's hard for them. The state is also looking at providing a under-35 children exemption, so we're just trying to include and anticipate that, and we can look at that as well in the future. But that's kind of where that comes from. There's a discussion going on at the state level as to where these fall in the classification. The food code is, kind of writes that in there intended for like a restaurant facility, and a lot of the institutional type places have other food safety training, as we've discussed, as far as hospitals and the school systems as well.
Right. An in-home childcare situation with two or three children, very different than something larger than 35 children. And that conversation's going forward, and if the state were to make that determination, we would follow it, of course, right?
Right. And we are a little different than the state in that they don't require the certified food managers at this point. We have for several years, Minot does as well, and they have longstanding. They also require every food service worker to have a minimum safety training in food safety.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. There's a motion by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Osowski? Further comments?
Just one quick question. I know you have, went through here, the benefits. Are there any negative sides with adopting the full code?
I think it helps us a lot in many ways. All of our staff are, we train to the FDA standardization standards, so they have prerequisite training for us. We have a robust training process to do food inspections, as well as standardization through the state standardization officers, so it's very helpful in many ways. We do have a couple of things that we've carved out as far as timeliness for correction. We gave ourselves a little bit more wiggle room in taking out those sections of code. We can prescribe different timelines for correction from what the food code does provide. So, we have carved out a few exceptions from what is that national standard for the local flexibility, as well as what we're doing with the certified food protection manager and carving out the things that we're seeing and the hardships that we're hearing from the industry here locally.
So you've been able to incorporate that in the adoption here?
That is incorporated into this, yes.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. There's a motion second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bedard. Item 2.6, bids for Project 8544, District 588, Storm Water Pond, Number 1 for the Grand Valley's first addition. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. This is the first of two items tonight relating to bids for stormwater ponds. This one, Grand Valley First Edition, if you remember, this is the subdivision that we were developing south of 62nd Avenue South. Districts have been created. We approved plans and specs. It's been out for bid. You can see on the timetable, we're on the last segment here of a special assessment project. Normally, we would have the bids before you at the committee as a whole. Because of the time of year and timing issues, we're kind of in a bit of a race with Mother Nature relative to, you know, we want to optimize our construction activity with the cold, on set of the colder weather. And so we are bringing this in in a manner that we don't have the bids today. We're gonna open bids this week, and we will have them presented to you at the council meeting.
Questions from Mr. Grasser?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl. Is there a second? Second by Veen? Or a comment by Veen? Is there a second for... Do you second, Mr. Veen, or no? No? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Weber, yes. Mr. Veen, you have comments?
Well, the bids aren't in yet, right? So we gotta wait until we're awarded a bid.
Correct.
This is a basically a position...
Yeah, you wouldn't have to actually make a motion to, there's nothing to approve actually tonight, because we don't have the bids, but you'd be moving at a... tonight because we don't have the bids, but you'd be moving it ahead to the city council.
Right. It's essentially what we're doing, is moving it ahead to city council.
Moving it, yeah. There's nothing to vote on today.
Right. Right. Yeah, which was the intent? So, Mr. Gustad, do you want us to vote on it, or are we just moving it forward?
You got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Echoes off of the TV. Item 2.7, thank you, Mr. Grasser. Bids for Project 8485, District 589, Highway 81 and associated area regional stormwater pond and temporary access improvements. Mr. Grasser?
Yes, we have the same situation going here. The bids are going to be opened up also this week. The two bid openings are on different days. We're trying to make sure we optimize the contractor to get the best bid. So, we're opening one one day, one the next. But both of the bids, this bid will also go directly to city council next week.
So, do you want us to receive and file, or yes, Mr. Veen?
Just, I think we know where the end result is going to be. We're going to take a motion at the next council meeting. The recommendation is to award the contract to Low bidder. And we don't have the Low bidder, but we will act on the Low bidder at the next council meeting.
That's what we normally do, yeah. I believe so. So, Mr. Gustad, are we moving on now, or do you want us to, a motion and a second?
I think the motion should be to move the matter forward to the council meeting.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.8, thank you, Mr. Grasser. Project 8415 Riverside Dam Inspection. Mr. Krikko?
Good evening. Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. My name's Carter Yuland, and I work for the engineering department here in Grand Forks. And I have for about a year and a half now. I worked with David Kuranco to put together the Riverside Dam Inspection Report that we conducted on August 16th. The dam is located on the north end of town. You can get there by taking Mill Road north of Gateway and turn on Red Dot Place. The original dam was a rock-filled timber crib dam constructed in 1925. Purpose was to store city water supply. Due to numerous partial failures and costs to maintain the dam, a new dam was built in 1988, 1989 as a reinforced concrete baffled step structure. According to the construction report, the dam is 320 feet long with height of 13 feet and 278-foot-long weir set at an elevation of 793.3 mean sea level. During the flood protection project, rock rapids were placed over the structure and also downstream to make the dam safer and allow fish to travel upstream. In recent years, the dam was reclassified from a medium hazard dam to a low hazard dam to be consistent with the North Dakota State Water Commission's dam classification system. The reason for reclassification to a low hazard dam was because if the dam were to fail, there would not be any expected damage downstream. Original medium hazard classification was due to the water intake upstream of the dam. However, the benefits of the reservoir are not normally factored into the hazard classification. Only the downstream impacts if the dam were to fail. Since this is now classified as a low hazard dam, the North Dakota State Water Commission no longer does routine formal inspections as they would when it was classified as a medium hazard dam. These inspections occurred once every 10 years, with the last one being in 2009. City engineering staff now handle the inspections of the dam, which occur annually. Annual inspections include a physical visit to the dam, observations of the water flow over the dam, secondary damming due to debris, and comparing photographs of the previous year to the current year. Comparison of the past photographs helps determine if riprap has been displaced or if erosion of the banks has occurred. During this inspection, there were minor maintenance issues noted. The public works will be taken care of, and they've been aware, been made aware. But otherwise, the dam looks to be functioning properly. Be happy to open it up for questions, but this is an information-only item.
Thank you, Mr. Yuland. Thank you for presenting tonight. Any questions about Riverside Dam? Looks like it's in good shape. That's good news.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For being here. Appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. Item 2.9, Project 8338, consideration of alternatives for North 42nd Street Railroad grade separation crossing environmental document. Mr. Kranco, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. The staff report before you is a discussion on the alternatives that we currently have. And I have with us Scott Midell with KLJ, who's going to be giving you a PowerPoint presentation. It should.
Good evening. As David mentioned, I'm Scott Midell with KLJ. We've been working on this project now for a while, just looking at some alternatives for an underpass at the intersection of 42nd and Demers. So, to start with, kind of why we're here. What are we looking at this project for? And really, it's, the main point of this is to remove that railroad grade crossing that's at grade and make it be a grade separated so we can, you know, increase connectivity through the city, delay, reduce any delays caused by that railroad crossing currently. This does kind of fall in line with the long-range plan the cities had in place for a while. So, you know, we're just looking at what we can do to keep that process moving forward. Some project history, this has been ongoing for quite a while. In 1998 is when this was originally started to be studied. And then, in 2006, we started a draft PCR, which at the time was a project concept report, a type of environmental document. We looked at quite a few alternatives, and then the project was put on hold. In 2014, the project then took off again, and we completed the categorical exclusion. And we took two alternatives through that. The categorical exclusion was completed but not signed by Fed Highway due to lack of funding. So, fast forward to current day, in 2021, we reevaluated some of these. We looked at five alternatives that were previously looked at and have updated them since. We've updated our traffic operations report. We completed a new topographic survey of the area. And then, we've updated all the alternatives to make sure they meet current design standards, things like that. Some of the project stakeholders we have that we've been working with. First one is University of North Dakota. As you may know, they owned the Re Richard Golf Course on the east side of 42nd. So, they've been a key stakeholder in this. We've kept them up to date as we've gone through this. We've met with them, showed them how they may be impacted based on some of these different alternatives. Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, we had a kickoff meeting with them in 2021 just to get their take on everything, make sure we have their most current standards, their most current desires, things like that. For example, they have increased their shoe fly design speed because they increased the mainline track speed right there. So, that's an impact that we had to reevaluate. They also want us to include them to add a third line on the south side of their current existing two tracks. So, we need to incorporate that into the design. And then, North Dakota DOT, Demers Avenue is North Dakota Highway 297. And so, that is a DOT roadway, so they have jurisdiction on that. So, we've been keeping them posted on, you know, the progress of the project and meeting with them regularly to make sure they know what's going on. Couple of things to note, we got a call from BNSF a few months ago. They are very interested in this project. It's top priority for them. And them, along with the North Dakota Department of Transportation, are pursuing several grants to try and help fund, find some funding for this project. Some of the impacts that we've, we're looking at when we go through this project, first and foremost, the gas station on the south side of the road. We have five alternatives we're currently looking at. Two of those alternatives, we're looking at a relocation of that gas station due, because we can't maintain the existing access. So, that's one. On the other side of Demers, we have the golf course, which again, we've been working with UND. But basically, for any alternative we have, because of how close the golf course is to Demers and 42nd, we will somehow impact that golf course. The mitigation is anything from relocating a tee box and a green to maybe just installing some netting along the side of the road. The railroad, again, we got to look at how we can maintain active service during all times through construction. And so, we got to look at a shoe fly. You know, if you're familiar with the area, there's the spur on the east side of the road, which is a hard stop. We can't, we can't impact that. And then, just to the west, there's the Interstate I-29 bridges, which, you know, we have to get back on existing line before then. And there's also a switch right there from the railroad tracks. So, we don't want to impact that if we don't have to. Public utilities, there's quite a few of them right there. City of Grand Forks has raw water lines. They have Forest Main Sanitary. They have water lines, storm sewer. So, basically, the gamut that you guys have right there, we have to work around. As long as private utilities, there's electric, gas, telecommunication that we're looking at. And then, just with the proposed project, everything out there is currently at grade. And so, the, you know, when we go to, go under that railroad, we're going to lower everything. So, we're going to have to add a lift station. It's going to increase potential flooding and drifting of snow with that. So, we have to take that into consideration. So, as I mentioned, we have five current alternatives, and I'll go through these each in more detail. But what I want to point out is we have what we call the B alternatives, B1, 2, and 3. And then, we have the C alternatives. So, with the B alternatives, Demers Avenue would stay at grade, and 42nd would go under Demers and the railroad. So, that'd be two bridges. The C alternatives depresses the entire intersection. So, both Demers and 42nd will be depressed, and they'll, just 42nd will go under the railroad. So, just one bridge. All right. So, to get into these, all of these, what we've done is we've worked with the engineering department to come up with a priority matrix and to rank these. And so, when you see here the high numbers, that means good. So, for example, on this one, traffic operations, second. This is the second-best alternative for traffic operations. So, this is what we call alternative B1. And what that does is it basically shifts the current intersection of 42nd and Demers to the east. It's got a jug handle to bring, bring any traffic desiring to get onto 42nd to the south, and in, connects to 42nd with another intersection to the south of the existing one. From there, 42nd goes north-south and will go under Demers and the railroad. Again, this is what the B alternatives, there'll be two structures involved with this. So, going through the rankings, as I mentioned, traffic operations, this is the second-best. Construction traffic impacts, this is, this is one of the lower ones. And how we looked at this is what can we do to try and keep traffic moving through this intersection during construction? Two major roadways for you guys. And so, if we have to shut that down, that's a lot of traffic impacts that they'll have to find detours elsewhere throughout town. So, we tried to figure out how many hours of delay would cause by motorists using different detours, things like that. Cost, this is the cheapest alternative. Drifting and flooding risk, this, you know, there's only two ways to look at this. We have depress everything or just depress one. And so, by us just depressing 42nd under the railroad and Demers, if this were to flood, if they would drift with snow and be impassable, it only restricts the north-south movement. It would not restrict the east-west movement. The golf course improvements, this has quite a bit of golf course impacts. And you can see that by where that jug handle goes through on the east side of Demers, or I'm sorry, 42nd. And then, right-of-way acquisition, this is one of the higher alternatives that we need for acquisition just because of the footprint of the project. And with this one, we've estimated this project cost to be around 44.6 million. Alternative B2, so this one is kind of a little bit of the opposite of the previous one we looked at. So, this alternative actually shifts the intersection of 42nd and Demers just slightly to the west of its current location. And again, kind of the same motion, jug handle to the, to the south to connect with 42nd. And then, this would go under Demers and the railroad. Traffic operations, this is the best for traffic operations. Construction traffic impacts is also very high. And one of the reasons is we are trying to build 42nd off-alignment. And so, our hope would be to get a lot of 42nd built without impacting any of the north-south movements on 42nd Street. Cost, this is, you know, up on the higher end of, lower end, I guess, of cost. Same drifting and flooding risk, it's the same as before. All that happened is we're restricting north-south movements if anything were to drift or flood. Golf course improvements, again, with 42nd being shifted to the east, it does have quite a big impact on the golf course. And then, right-of-way, this would be the highest acquisition of all of the alternatives. All right. So, moving on to the last B alternative, this is alternative B3. I want to note that this was actually the preferred alternative in the 2014 categorical exclusion that was completed. So, traffic operations, it's tied for second. Construction traffic impacts also tied for second. This has the highest cost. And one of the reason, or I guess the reason is, is because you'll notice where the location of the bridge is and trying to maintain access to that existing gas station, we can't do it. And so, we've estimated a relocation of that business with this alternative. So, we're impacting more on the west side, but on the east side, we have very few golf course impacts. And so, that's why we'll see second place for golf course improvements. And then, right-of-way, not a lot of acquisition with this one compared to the other ones. And a big part of that is these two parcels, I don't know if you can see the cursor right here, these two parcels are owned by the City of Grand Forks currently. And so, we wouldn't have to acquire those. With this one, with it being the highest cost, we're looking at $54.4 million is what we're estimating. So, that was all the B alternatives. The C alternatives, again, this is depressing the whole thing. So, C1, this is basically same operations that are out there today, except you're going to be 20 feet lower than you are right now. Traffic operations, it's, you know, on the lower end of the, compared to the rest of the alternatives. So, it's still going to be an improvement for what's out there today. It's just compared to the others, it's in fourth place. Traffic impacts, this is the highest. With both 42nd and Demers following the existing alignment, we would basically have to shut this intersection down for at least a year to get this, all the excavation done, all the paving done, get the bridge in place, things like that. So, that really takes a toll on our ranking for the traffic impacts. The cost, this is one of the more expensive ones as well. Again, this is due to having to relocate that business on the south side. And the reason for that is because we're so low, we're unable to get our vertical roadway profile to get up and tie into existing ground in time to be at grade for the grass, for the traffic of the gas station to get in and out. Golf course improvements, you know, this one, basically maintaining existing alignments, we're very minimally impacting the golf course. And then, right-of-way, again, maintaining existing alignments, there isn't a lot of acquisition. With this one, we're looking at 53.4 million. And then, the last of the alternative, C2, same operations as the previous alternative we just looked at, but we shift that whole intersection to the east. And part of the reason to look at this is to, again, increase the operations during construction. We can build some of that offline. And then, also, this allows us to gain more elevation as we're going west from the intersection, and we can maintain access to the gas station on the south side of the road. This one is estimated to be 51.1 million. So, again, we're maintaining access to the gas station, but we're pushing some of those impacts on the east side and impacting the golf course more. So, here's just an overview of the alternatives. Again, the B alternatives have two structures. The C alternatives have one structure. So, we range in price from 44.6 to, you know, just under 55 million. So, what we wanted to look at is, as we were ranking these, you know, how do each one of these compare to each other? So, we looked at different ways of, you know, we didn't, we have these categories of traffic operations, construction impacts, cost, drifting, flooding risk, golf course improvements, and right-of-way. So, the first thing we looked at is what if we didn't weight any of them? This is, all of them have the same weight. And here's what we look at, is B3 would be the top, the highest scoring alternative with C2 being the lowest scoring. So, then, we looked at, all right, this is what the engineering department came up with. This is how we weighted these. And again, so then, this is what, this is the outcome. B3 still in first place. Now, C2, or I'm sorry, C1 becomes the lowest ranked. Then, we looked at, all right, what if we would favor cost? Well, B3 falls a little bit with that being the most expensive. But again, that is basically because we're adding so much money for that relocation of that gas station. So, then, we looked at, well, what if we assume a buyout for all the alternatives? What does that do with cost? And that kind of levels the playing field more. And basically, I guess what I'm getting at with this is, as we looked at different scenarios, that B3 alternative kind of keeps creeping up towards the top end of it. So, just some food for thought as we're looking at this. The other thing we wanted to look at is, you know, we have talked to that landowner on the south side of the gas station, and it is his desire to not have any modifications to his access. Currently, he has a full access. With all of the alternatives, two of them, he would be relocated. The rest would be, the access would be reduced to right-in, right-out. So, we looked at what could we do to get a full access? So, we put together a memo of just looking at the traffic analysis to see, is it feasible? Does it maintain a level of service, things like that? So, we looked at the alternatives that didn't include a buyout, which is B1, B2, and C2. And what we found is- And what we found is, there's very minor network differences, very minor intersection operational changes. And through that, we found that if we would modify our current C2 alternative to, we had to increase some distance between the interchange and the new 42nd and Demers intersection, just to get more of a gap in there with traffic, because they'll both be signalized, we could, we could get a full access to work. And so, that's what we looked at. We, we revised C2, or I guess we created a new alternative to see what the full access of the gas station would look like. And so, this is kind of what we came up with. So really, basically, long story short, is, it'll work, the, the level of service at the gas station intersection will be, will meet current thresholds for about 20 years, and then it'll start to fall apart. Because of the intersection spacing out there, with the interchange being right there, a big intersection, 42nd and Demers also a big intersection, we can't meet the DOT's required turn lane length for the westbound traffic trying to turn right into the ga, I'm sorry, westbound traffic trying to turn left into the gas station. We need about 250 feet, we're only getting 100. So we did present this to DOT, we would need a design exception, and basically, what we've got back is, currently, they are not in favor of a full access. We went then to see what we could do with the three-quarter access. Same thing, we just, because of all the intersections so close together, we can't meet the DOT's required lengths, and it doesn't meet their, their current traffic operation intersect spacing, as a design discretion would be, would be required. We did present this to North Dakota DOT, we have not yet heard back if they would be supportive of a three-quarter access. So, our next steps, we're here tonight to kind of give you a preview of what this is, we can be back council next week. But, we want to narrow down the alternatives we want to carry forward through our categorical exclusion. So right now, based on our, our presented, presentation to the North Dakota DOT, they recommended eliminating Alternative B2, and then keeping Alternative B3 for the fact that B3 was the previously preferred alternative. From there, we want to complete our environmental document and get this ready for the next step. And with that, I'll open it up any questions unless David's got something.
Well, I've, I've got a few follow-up items on this one as well. As Scott mentioned, we had discussed with, or been having discussions with the property owner of the gas station. And one of the things we did ask from them is, if they had a, a stance, or if they wanted the city council to know where, where they were at. And a statement that we got from them, from the Dusterhoff family stores was, "At this point, Dusterhoff family stores has not been provided sufficient information to provide a stance on this project, or in what particular ways it will be impacted by the project. Dusterhoff family store's position is that it wants to have the least interruption to its operations, and least disruption to access as possible. As we understand it, there are five different plans under consideration. If you provide more detailed description of the impacts of each of these plans on Dusterhoff family stores, we could then provide better commentary on the project. Dusterhoff family stores reverts, reserves all rights, as it has as a landowner, taxpayer, or other interested party that may be affected by this project." Overall, we are still in the process of the environmental document for this project, and the reason why we're bringing it forward to you tonight is to see if we can't narrow down the number of alternatives we have as we progress through this environmental document, until we eventually get to a decision document, and then a final conclusion of this. And with that, staff is recommending reducing the alternatives for consideration in the environmental document to B1, B3, thank you Scott, and C2 for this project, contingent upon concurrence with the North Dakota Department of Transportation.
Can I ask a general question, David?
Yeah, sir.
And I know we've been looking at this for a long time. I don't recall, and maybe, maybe this was discussed in the past, why are we pulling, putting all the jug handles south of Demers rather than north of Demers where there's equal amount of available land?
You probably don't have more history on that.
Um, really because of the railroad tracks on the north side. We now have to create another crossing of that structure, just grades and everything like that, trying to get, get back to tie in. And you can see from these, just how far south we are. If you mirror that, we, we might be in conflict with that.
There just isn't enough room.
Yeah, it's just the, the railroad and possibly not enough room on the north side.
Any, any questions, anyone? Mr. Weber?
One thing that I, I think I heard for the first time tonight, BNSF wants to put in a third line.
So, I should caveat that a little bit. It's pretty standard when, when we propose a grade separation with the railroad, that they want you to, like with, for example, the bridge, they wanted the abutments wide enough so that in the future, if they want to put a third track in, it can. We've gone through this on a similar project in Moorhead, and MnDOT basically said, "No, we're not going to do that." But BN is also coming back with some paperwork to say, "If in the future we want a third line, you guys are on the hook for everything." And so, there's no plan currently to install a third track, it's just, we need to build in the infrastructure to accommodate one possibly in the future.
I see. Thanks, thanks for that clarification. There've been previous studies, some going back a long ways, to moving all of this just north of town. And when I think of the grade separation, the bridge at Washington, the situation at Gateway, all of, the, the traffic downtown, et cetera, it seems like a lot of expense to keep this here. But I don't even know why I'm mentioning it, because it's probably not going anywhere, but is this, is this even remotely being considered, just moving the railroad north of town, gaining all of this property that would provide tremendous value in a really key part of our city? I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you, David.
I, I think in general, when it comes to relocating the, the rail yard as you're, as you're describing, I can't remember exactly what details have, have gone into that, or what estimates, but I'm sure that would be a, a tremendous amount of capital in order to have something like that occur.
If I recall right, it was 300, 400 million, which is tremendous. But all of these projects that we're doing here, the, the expense, and then, we will continue to have these problems, they're adding a third line, or possibility of a third line, it, it just goes on and on. It was silly for me to bring it up. Thanks.
Other comments, Mr. Veen?
Just, well, a couple of them here. It, you know, not all impacts, as we went through them, are equal. You didn't, did you consider weighting the impacts, so that you don't, because they're not all equal?
Yeah, so we did, and, and that was what we're trying to, to get across here, is, we looked at weighting the impacts differently to just to kind of see if there was one that, that continued to migrate towards the top. So, again, here with the, oh, that's a touchscreen. The top one, none of the, they're all weighted the same, the categories that we have. And as we go through this, we've ranked them differently to try and see which, which alternative would be ranked highest. So we looked at strictly just ranking cost as, as the, the highest rank, traffic operations, construction traffic impacts, and then the golf course, to see which would come out. And then, you can see the second line here, scenario 2, that is the current ranking system that we have, that was used to develop these that I went through with each slide.
Did, did we get a copy of this, or do we have one?
I believe if.
Is the weighting in there too? I didn't remember seeing that.
If you didn't receive a copy of this, it should be available on, on the website.
Because I, I would like to take a look at it, because there's the other thing that, that I think of is, and it might fall under some of your traffic analysis, but confusion for drivers, the misdirection that you'll have as you're trying to get through the intersection, and added travel time that you will potentially have to hear. Obviously, there's less travel time if there's a train, while depending on if you're going east-west maybe, versus north-south. But I've always been a little challenged where, to take a right, you take a left and you go down, and then you take another right, and unless you know the roads or whatever, there is that confusion, because just like costs, which I know costs are important, costs are upfront, capital, one-time expense. The, the travel impacts, whether convenient or not, are life, I mean, 50 years. So, it's not always, more expensive isn't always bad if you actually compensate it through the longevity of what's going on. The other concern I, I'm seeing is, the golf course has always been, I think, what we used to call 4F lands, right?
Yeah, so we're working with the DOT right now. We actually just developed a questionnaire to sit down with the golf course owner to determine if it is 4F.
Because at that point, I used to run around that golf course a lot, there's not a lot of room to start taking any land. And as you, I was comparing at least C1 and C2, the advantage to C1 was you didn't take golf course land.
So, with C1, we would still need, there are still some impacts, like I said, we'd have to put, because we're lowering it, even to build a retaining wall, there'd be some temporary impacts for the excavation. But we have laid out mitigation concepts for all five of these. It, you're right, absolutely, it is a very tight place.
But even with them, I mean, again, days ago, you never touched 4F land, you just worked everything you did because you had to have an alternative, it, it had to be really the only alternative. And so, that's why I'm confused about the impacts that, going through with this one, when you know you have impacts on, on the golf course.
And we're, so one thing with this one is, UND has been supportive. We have a letter of support from them for the project, and, and like I mentioned, we are working with the DOT to hard and fast figure out if that is a 4F property or not.
Because at one time, you know, they were looking at developing it, and it wasn't 4F as far as, now that it's converted back, is, the university is still supporting, taking part of their golf course?
As long as we make them whole again, so they would still have nine holes in the
So, to refresh everyone's memory, you're asking us to narrow, narrow down to B1, B3, and C2, correct?
That is correct.
So, I've got a question.
Contingent upon concurrence with DOT.
Yeah, the, the property owner, south of Demers there, they're asking for us not to have any impacts to their egress, ingress, and egress. And in all three of these scenarios, there is, and in, as a matter of fact, in one of the scenarios, we're indicating that we need to buy them out. There isn't any specific number in here as to what we're estimating for the cost. I, I assume that's why B3 was the most expensive, because we're estimating that we're going to buy them out. Have we had any discussion with them at all related to the number that they believe that their property is worth versus the number that we're estimating that it's worth?
I've, I've talked to him a couple times. He has not indicated a number. He is, he said, you know, once, once this becomes more of a reality, he'd like to more formally handle this with his attorney.
Sure, and, because of course, buying their property, whatever that property is worth is, is one thing, but perhaps if he wants to open, or she or they want to open a new gas station somewhere else, the cost of getting into a new one is probably different than the one that they currently have. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm prepared to say we should do one thing or, or the other without actually having that conversation with him in advance, myself. Because if there is no way that we're going to come to, to come to a reasonable agreement, I, I just, I don't see us taking his property in eminent domain. I, I mean, maybe I'm, that's just me, but I think that we'd have a hard time with that, which means eliminating other alternatives where we're not taking their property, I'm not sure that that's the right thing to do. Mr. Veen, comments?
Along that line, the other thing besides taking the property, which is obviously very critical, is who's paying the cost of taking that property? And is, is right-of-way a local responsibility, including the, taking property, or is that a federal responsibility?
I'll let you go for it. Well, so, right now, we haven't, we've divided the costs, very high-level, on what is the cost due to the improvements on Demers versus 42nd. That's about all. This project is in the stip, but I don't think to me, there is a commitment of cost.
Yeah, at this point in time, there isn't a, a commitment of cost right now. We have those three different programs that we're currently working on applying for, which are the Chrissy, the Railroad Cross Elimination, and the Reconnecting Communities. So we're still working through those details as to who will end up paying for what, and how those cost splits will end up working out.
I think, just from my point of view, I, in all of these scenarios, we're having some sort of impact to that, to their property. I think unless they say, you know, you know, well, how do I say this the right way? Unless they're willing to compromise some, right, which, you know, perhaps they'd be willing to compromise some, which doesn't include buying out my property, for example. If they're willing to say, "Okay, I'll, I'll compromise XYZ, assuming you're not going to buy out my property," or try to, you know, "take my property," I think that would be pertinent information to know, so that we would, in my opinion, we'd eliminate the ones that they're unwilling to, or that we perhaps wouldn't want to go down that road. But again, that's just my opinion. I, I struggle with eliminating things when I feel like, although we've been working on this forever, and I know that you have lots invested in this, and I really appreciate where we are, I just think that perhaps we should have a further conversation with them to identify that we're actually getting to the point where we need to start making some of these decisions, so that we can get a better understanding of where they are. Does, does that make sense? Any cha, any chance we talk to them before next Monday?
We did try and get a meeting with them prior to this, so we could try and answer the questions you just asked. And we got an email response that David read off. So we can, we can try again to see if, if he'd be interested in sitting down.
And I would think equally important, whether they do or don't, is what that cost's going to be, and who's going to pay it. It's hard to make any decisions until you know those things.
Exactly. So, I, I think, again, and just in my opinion, I'm happy moving this forward to next week's council meeting for further discussion, if we could learn a little more information between now and then. And if you need, I know Mr. Dusterhoff personally and can reach out. I wouldn't do it without you and probably the city attorney, or at least I can help make that connection if, if that, if that works for you. So, I'm not interested in being in the middle of it, though.
Fair enough. We'll reach out, see if we can't get some of those questions answered before City Council meeting next Monday.
Okay, so, receive and file, move it, why don't, how about a motion to move this to next week? Mr. O'Agal moves, second by Osowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate it. Okay, item 210, Project 8540, federal funding request, HSI P, Mr. Karinko, you've got all of our road projects tonight. Great.
All right, thank you, President Sandy, and members of the committee. This is, the next four items are all our information-only items on our various grant funding opportunities that are going to be coming up, and kind of giving you a sneak peek as to what staff is recommending, or going to be, likely to be recommending to move forward for submitting. And then, we're also looking for input from this, this committee as well. If, if there's a desire to shift or move, that way then, we can take that into consideration before getting city council approval at a future committee of the whole and city council meeting. Highway Safety Improvement Program project, as I discussed, I believe, last cow, or last committee of the whole, was, this is a safety program geared towards improving safety. It's a 90-10 split in most situations, or if it's on a, it's on a secondary regional, it's a 95-5. Looking at the project to realign the left turn lanes up at the intersection of Gateway Drive and North Columbia Road. Right now, those left turn lanes are negatively offset, kind of similar to what we had down on 32nd Avenue. So we're looking to realign that. And in addition to that, improve the, the turn radiuses going around those corners, making those a little bit larger. That way then, larger vehicles like trucks and semis don't end up popping up over the curb. And in doing so, and realigning that, that southern leg in particular, we could also end up moving those traffic signals outside of the clear zone. That way then, it, it gets it further away from the roadway to prevent vehicles colliding in with them, potentially if they run off the road. Overall, it's about a $2.5 million project. And I can stand for any questions you may have. This is it.
Questions about the highway safety improvement plan? Questions about the highway safety improvement plan? Hearing none, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Item 211, Project 8540, federal funding for the Urban Roads Program.
Thank you, President Sandy. This is our annual urban roads program. Overall, we get about $2.7 million annually of federal funding for this program. This is geared more towards our urban classified roadways. These are going to be your, your Columbia Roads, oh, University Avenue, Mill and Overly Project was, was one of these as well. Currently, we have a reconstruction project on North Columbia Road programmed from University Avenue to 8th Avenue North. But what we've been seeing is that the roadway out in the industrial park, South 48th Street, particularly from DeMers to 13th, it's, it's, it's in kind of rough shape, and it's continuing to deteriorate at a rapid rate. So what we're likely to propose is to reprogram the funding that we currently have allocated towards reconstructing North Columbia Road from University to 8th, to reconstructing South 48th Street from DeMers to 13th Avenue. And then the other project we're looking to apply for is going to be the Point Bridge Rehabilitation Project in 2026. East Grand Forks currently has that programmed as part of their sub-target federal funding in 2026. And we did apply for that last year, however, it did not appear in the draft step, so we would recommend reapplying for it. That way then we have the funding to back up East Grand Forks' share of that rehabilitation project. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Mr. Veen, I'm sorry.
Just, I've seen, I mean, the MPO with the projects, you have the proportion 2026. The Point Bridge Rehab.
Yes, that is, that is for our share of it. That's our 50%, because it's a half of, yep.
And any other questions for Mr. Krinko? Hearing none, thank you. Item 212, Project 8540, federal funding request for Regional Roads Program. Mr. Krinko?
Thank you, President Sandy. Regional road programs, these are going to be regional roads that are Gateway Drive, Washington Street, 32nd Avenue, DeMers Avenue. These are all roadways that are under the DOT's jurisdiction. And working with the DOT Local District, they've kind of put together a list of projects that they'd like to see, we've been working with them on those. Some of these projects are the turn lane improvements on Gateway and, and North Washington, US 2 and US 81, 24 for just under $1 million. 2026, we're looking to try to program in that, that interchange project for the construction of it. I believe they are currently, the DOT is currently working on the environmental document for that one, and that's anticipated to be completed this upcoming spring. So they're trying to get kind of a, a jump into getting that project programmed for construction. 2027, the DeMers Avenue Concrete Panel Replacement and Grind. This is from the central fire station to North 6th Street, and it's excluding the overpass work that's currently under construction. This kind of catches those two areas that haven't been worked on in a while, and takes care of those. In addition to that, trying to get economy of scale, we're also looking at getting another concrete panel replacement and grind up on Gateway Drive between I-29 and North 55th Street, hoping to bundle those two projects together. That way then you get one contractor, one, one set of bids for it, and hopefully get some lower bid prices on it. And then lastly, in 2028, looking to apply for South Washington Street Reconstruct from DeMers to Hameling for about 7.2 million. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Yes, Mr. Veen, further questions?
Yeah, just, the one intersection I do have a concern on, I want to be on record on, is the Gateway Drive, North 42nd. I think that, that, a left turn lane for eastbound traffic. I have a concern with, with, when you have a train crossing the tracks, and you've got to take a left to go up on 42nd, and you have cars backed up with longer trains, that we don't cause backup on interstate. So, just, I want to make sure we're aware of that concern.
I believe that the turn lane improvements on US 2, I believe that lengthens that, one of the pieces on that one, I believe, is lengthening that exact turn lane.
Right, it is, but you've got to cross two lanes of traffic to get over to the turn lane to take it when you have cars backed up.
Gotcha, I understand.
Additional comments or questions related to the Regional Roads Program? Hearing none, okay. Item 213, Project 8540, federal funding request for the Urban Grant Program. Mr. Krinko, last but not least.
Thank you, President Sandy. This is the Urban Grant Program. This is focused on the downtown area. We ended up applying for two projects last year. The selection committee still has not met on that. They're anticipating meeting, I believe it was, I believe they're planning on meeting October 3rd. So we should hopefully hear soon as to the results of that selection committee before we end up applying this upcoming round. Normally, we end up finding out in about June, so they're a little bit behind schedule on that one. And so we're, at this point in time, we're looking at applying for whichever project or both projects, if neither are awarded.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veen?
Yeah, just, I know for some time we've been looking at replacing old water treatment plants with a new apartment complex or something. Have we looked at any road improvements that we would start considering for that?
Trying to recall.
And I didn't know if that fit in this program. That's the reason why I was asking, if it did fit in this one.
Yeah, roadway improvement projects in that area would fall under this, could fall under this program as being eligible, especially if you're looking at roadway improvements, if you're looking at decorative lighting, extra amenities, absolutely, that, that would qualify. It does fall within the downtown boundary. One of the attachments I have in the staff report is that, what that boundary is, which that water treatment plant site would fall into that. I believe North 3rd Street is, it's a concrete street in that area, and it's in fairly good condition. I'm assuming you would be looking more at, or sorry, South 3rd Street. I'm assuming you would be looking more at South 4th Street for some kind of improvement?
I was really thinking of intersection probably improvements more than anything to keep traffic going and, just, just to keep that in mind.
Understood.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
Yeah, if I may, the 2025 intersection improvements at Belmont Road and South 5th Street, are we talking about the intersection at Cottonwood Community and Valley Dairy there by the shelter?
That's correct.
And, so that's, that's South 5th Street, I guess?
Yep, that would be correct.
And what's, what's intended there? Do we?
Not one, I believe we're looking at a roundabout, is what we're looking at in that area. Just some intersection improvements, kind of getting traffic to, to fully understand where it's supposed to go, who has the right of way, when. Right now, there's, with the wide, with the wide roadway widths that we have, particularly on South 5th Street, you're looking at some alternatives to try to narrow up those lanes so people know where they're going, where, how to get where, and who has the right of way.
Is there ever been any consideration of simply closing off South 5th at that point, and reducing the amount of traffic into that intersection?
One of the alternatives that we did look at when we were first putting this project together last year, we put together a whole bunch of different alternatives as to, you know, what might work best, and trying to get some input from some of those surrounding property owners. And we did look at an option which closed off South 5th Street, and I believe put like a little mini roundabout, or not a mini roundabout, a little mini cul-de-sac. That way then you'd still have access into that, that parking lot there. That was one of the alternatives that we looked at. But ultimately, I don't think it rose to the top, but it was an alternative we did look at and considered.
Thanks.
Mr. Weber, is there a reason why a roundabout wouldn't accomplish the same thing? I mean, I would assume you're, what you're indicating is closing off 5th farther to the east of that intersection.
Right.
To, to, I would assume that there's very little traffic coming from east to west that way, right? Maybe not, just based upon my history. So if you go to a roundabout, I would think that at least it would eliminate the confusion and probably wouldn't, wouldn't significantly hinder or add more traffic.
My, my understanding is the roundabout has been problematic because there just wasn't enough room there, enough property to accommodate a roundabout. And it seemed that one way of accommodating that need for more property would be to close, to move the roundabout to, to the east along South 5th Street there.
Okay, more, more to come.
More to come.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Any other questions from Mr. Krinko? Hearing none. Mr. Grasser, did you have something to add to the?
I'll just try to make, make it brief. The fact that we applied for a roundabout doesn't mean we can't look at other alternatives when we're getting into that actual project development. The other thing is, what the MPO, when they studied it, they kind of came up, when they looked at alternatives, came up with the roundabout, and also some of the private work. The challenge with the roundabout, to a large degree, has been keeping the access to the gas station. And we've been working with that property over the last couple of years, and we've actually been able to modify and make some changes to that, that I think is going to end up being conducive to allowing the roundabout to go in. So, again, all those dynamics are kind of in, in play there.
And I love roundabouts for car traffic. It's a bit tricky for accommodating pedestrian traffic, and there's a fair bit of pedestrian traffic there as well. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you all. Any other comments? Hearing none, thank you. Good info tonight. Item 214, Bus Maintenance Facility Rehab Phase 2, Professional Services Agreement, Architectural Engineering Design Construction Services, JLG, Project 8643. Mr. Bergman, good evening.
President Sandy and members of the committee, what this is, is the start of our project here for a building that we ended up getting the funding for. This is a continuation of our previous agreement that we had with JLG. It was Project 7942, and because this is going to be Phase 2, we decided to make a separate project number, 8643, so we can track it and also have better records for our federal partners in it. So this is an agreement for $464,828. Previously, you did see one that had a mistake that was in there for the 574. That should have been changed out earlier. My fault, I sent the wrong one twice. I did get it corrected today. Previously, it would have been 574, but because we already paid $111,000, $111,40 for design development process, that was already taken out, so.
Great, any comments, questions? Mr. Weigle moves approval. Sir, second? Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Item 215, Transit Development Plan Update. Ms. Kuba, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening, Council President, President Sandy, members of the council. Just trying to get you guys updated again on this plan. We, we are getting closer to the end. This is a plan that is going to be in the comprehensive plan for the city, as well as being part of the MPO's Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So it's looking far, farther into the future. I'm going to kind of glance over some of these highlights, we, of services that we've brought forward previously. We've had a couple of rounds of public input on this. We're introducing microtransit. It is one of the most interesting ideas that, that were popular with the public. We also broke down a lot of the service improvements into a short term or a long term, present, just for the ability to move forward with a lot of things, so that there's smoother movement. We did look at the UND. UND was interested mostly in keeping things as they are today for the short term, and then moving on when several of their projects on campus are finished, and reevaluating some of those routes. Part of this plan is also kind of this programmatic, so it's, you know, looking at how well we're, how we're doing with our website, interactive maps, reviewing any other changes that are needed. We also are suggesting of making sure we're improving customer feedback, as well as seeking some of those human service connections into the future. Those are the things we're looking at suggesting. We did look at our transit hubs, and we are, you know, we've got three. We have our, our main large one, which is the Metro Transit Center. We are looking at the fact that it's going to need some improvements, and funding will be needed to be focused in on that, to make it extend its useful life. We are looking at our other two hubs at the Grand Cities Mall and Columbia Mall, mostly because those two stops are being, coming even more popular, and with more, more traffic in use, we want to make sure that those accommodations are made, so that there's better shelter and things like that.
Ms. Kuba, I appreciate you being so respectful of our time. And I don't want to speed you up any further. This is being brought to us tonight, information only, but will there be decision points for us, and on what parts of this presentation will be, will we be asked to make decisions?
We will be looking at, we are looking for impact, input onto the, the project itself. Where, as, as I showed, we are looking at the end. We are further on in our presentation. We are going to have some of that.
I apologize for interrupting. Thanks.
And I'm getting kind of closer to that point, too. Part of those, we're also looking at is the financial, and mostly focusing in on the financial in this presentation, because we do have the, the other capital assets, like buses, and, you know, fare collections, machinery, and things like that. There's costs that we will need to replace them, because they will be at their, the end of their useful life. So we do evaluate those costs, and make sure we're evaluating them into the future as to when we're going to be needing them. As Dale said, we are getting an addition on to that Phase 2 plan of the main facility for maintenance, as well as general maintenance or repair of all facilities. So we're also getting costs of what all these things are going to cost for bus stops as well, and if we're going to need, start doing any more planning into the future about transit services or anything of that nature. So, what we're looking at is, we've, we've reviewed what we need, what, we've reviewed what we have been asked from the public to look at and include into our plans. And then we are, we've looked at our revenue that's coming in from Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. And then we've reviewed what the expenses are for the, for the whole system. So we, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, and UND. Shuttle, Shuttle Campus, Campus Shuttle, sorry. Our revenue forecasts are based on a two, roughly a 2% increase per year. So, we've taken our base year and increased it every year by 2%. Our, our main expenses are our fixed drought, as well as our demand response and, and our paratransit senior rider. Those costs are increased by 4%. We're looking at a rather higher percentage for expenses in relation to our revenues. So, I'll let you review those in your, your free time, specifically. But to have a summary of it, when we're looking at expenses, most people are talking about the operating expenses. We did have some capital expenses also included in our review, so that we know roughly how much money is needed when we start reviewing any kind of tip, tip projects or anything like that for the MPO area. But we're looking at the revenues, and we're looking at the total expenses in this summary, and it's, those expenses are the operating cost. And then the surplus is generally used for capital projects for the city, so the city can improve, make their percentage of that federal cost. We are going to work with CAT into the future, because we are becoming concerned for future, a future discrepancy between revenues and expenses. Other than that, we do have some additional studies. We want to make sure that the MPO is going to be looking at that microtransit into the future, making sure that we help into the future, making sure that we help CAT make a smooth transition if they so choose to make those, that, start using microtransit. We were asked to look at industrial park service, mostly by our businesses in that area. We did come up with some plans for that, but we want to be able to make sure that we choose the correct service, whether it's a fixed route service, or if it's a microtransit service. So, these are just future studies for the MPO to do's to assist CAT in making some of their major decisions. Other than that, we are in the middle of our comment period for this draft plan for the public. We are going to be presenting that on September 29th. So, it will be, right now, the plan is available in print in various places, as well as online on the project website, which is cattransitplan.com. And we are mostly, you know, gathering comments, but as kind of referring to some of that information, we're going to start going through the process of adopting this plan. So, we'll have a lot of comment from the public before we present the final plan to the city council for future adoption. And other than that, you know, we've got lots of information.
Thank you very much. Lots of really good information. Any comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
Slide 35. Just, this was the summary. And over the 10-year financial plan period, operating expenses are increasing faster than system revenues. So, we see the curves cross there. Why are operating expenses increasing faster than system revenues? Why that projection?
It's just simply, when we start looking at the labor cost, the cost of maintaining vehicles, maintaining property, maintaining, and allowing for, you know, that's a lot of labor intensiveness. There's drivers' costs. There's, you know, everything is going up, and everybody is needing to be paid at a proper level.
Revenues during that same period are also forecast to go up. Is this based on increased ridership estimates, or increased fares?
There's, we aren't suggesting an increase in fares for the simple reason, it's, we're pretty much the same across the board when we look at our peers for fare costs. We do look to the federal government for increasing in cost, but as I said, our increase in that is only looking at a 2% increase. So, you know, we're, we are looking at that as pretty steady, and so we're going to have to start making, working with CAT into the future to see how we can do that.
And this slide suggests that one solution to this is additional sources of local funding. Is that being done anywhere else in the state or region?
I believe transit across the nation is pretty much doing that. They're trying to find ways to partner with private industries, and as well as private, you know, public-private partnerships throughout the nation, so.
Right. So, we have Digiki running buses all the way from East Grand Forks up to their plant.
Yes.
But we're not yet able to provide service to the industrial park, for instance. Are there discussions going on with private, private-public partnerships there?
We, as some people know, in the past, there was once a industrial bus, industrial park bus going. It did not succeed at any point in time. So, we have been hesitant to put it forward until now. Mostly, now, we have a lot more, there's a lot more businesses out there that are running at more of a five, you know, eight to five timeframe, which would be advantageous for our bus service currently. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to work with them and have a partnership with that area.
Is there anything being done to get feedback from the workforce out there?
We have done a brief study, but it is one thing that we, that's one of the future studies we want to do as part of that, making sure that we are able to provide a service that is needed, and that we can actually provide it. If not, then we would support whatever the businesses would like to try and do on their own.
Again, thanks for being so respectful of our time tonight. This was a lot of important information, and it's important to the future of our community. So, if we wanted more information between now and then, contact you.
Contact me. There's a lot of information on our website for the plan as well. The full plan for the, is available, as well as, there's a lot of appendices that have a lot more detail.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you so much. The, we had discussed adding council members additional business to the agenda, if people had. I see that it didn't get put on this agenda, but if there's anyone that has general comments for the good of the order, then is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Weigle, seconded by Osowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everybody.